This conference will now be recorded.
Welcome to the Alpine City Council meeting of November 15, 2021. Call the order, please.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Here.
Councilman Mitchell?
Here.
Councilman Noah?
Here.
Councilman Osmer?
Here.
And Mayor Walagora?
Here. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America. To the Republic, which stands one nation, on great and with soul.
All right. Entertainer motion to approve the agenda. Second.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
And Mayor Walagora?
Thank you. Any potential modifications? An approval of the minutes for regular session and closed session of November 1, 2021, and special session of November 9, 2021. Any issues, changes, problems? Citizens in speaking before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. If you'd like to do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records. This is the only time this evening that the public is allowed to address council. And if you're live, please do so. Live means in the room. All right, seeing no one here. Anybody in the virtual meeting? Thank you, sir. A public hearing tonight, so next up is our consent agenda. A is bills to be allowed in the amount of $435,102.91. B is the school liaison officer agreement. C is a council appointment of Ashley Wilmot Peterson to the planning commission for a three-year term expiring on November 1, 2024. I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We just got November or December?
December. I meant December. Not sure what I said. December 1, 2024.
So that was Noah, Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Hi.
And Mayor Proton Johnson?
Thank you. Next, we have report of officers. First up is the perpetual care lot fund. And Anna Zoikis can start that off.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. The perpetual lot care fund is a permanent fund, and by definition, it means that it must be invested in perpetuity. That also means that we can only use the investment earnings from the, from the fund to cover expenses such as maintenance and upkeep of the cemetery. So right now, at June 30, 2021, the unofficial fund balance was $1,007,402. Of that amount, $115,000 of that is invested in a muni bond, and that matures in October, 2025. So we still have four more years to go on that one. We also have a CD in the amount of $150,000, which will mature in February. So once that matures, we can pull those funds. And the remainder of $742,402 is in a savings account and also in our receivables. At this point, and point in time, I don't have an exact amount, but it's, it's around $740,000 that we could access and invest as we wish. For the past 10 fiscal years, the fund has earned $72,290 in interest income, with the last fiscal year being a meager amount of $1,799. So as you can see, the time has come to look at other options that will provide a significantly increased return on our investment, because what we currently have is not working for us. City manager Smolinski and I have been in contact with Mr. Patrick Hargody from the Community Foundation about options for investment of the fund with the foundation. And Mr. Hargody is with us, and he would like to present the options to you.
Yes, please.
All right, good.
Good evening, council. Patrick Hargody, Executive Director of the Community Foundation for Northeast Michigan. I thought I would just take just a brief moment to talk about the foundation. I'm so excited that we've moved to this point in the conversation. When I first joined the Community Foundation about five years ago, I heard of this opportunity for partnership between community foundations and municipalities in, in regard to their perpetual care funds. And so I'm glad that the conversation has progressed to this point this evening. Can I have the next slide, please? For those of you that aren't familiar with the Community Foundation for Northeast Michigan, we're a tax-exempt organization, 501(c)(3). We serve Alpena, Alpona, Mount Marensee, and Presqueille counties. But then we're also the lead foundation for three affiliates that roll up under us. So essentially, our board is the administrative and legal arm of a total of nine counties. But CFNEM is Alpena, Mount Marensee, Presqueille, and Alpona counties. Total assets at the end of last year, $66,340,000. We've got about 500 charitable funds. Really, these really are 500 unique stories of individuals and organizations connecting to their communities. Next slide, please. You know, so what do we do with the Community Foundation? I think that briefly, you know, we gather gifts of all sizes from a variety of donors, and we build permanent endowments that exist in perpetuity. Next slide, please. I think that, you know, some of the things that we do that are important in this conversation is offering a cost-effective partnership, and we have a proven investment performance at the Community Foundation. Next slide. I think if you click it again, something comes up. We'll see. All right. So our fiscal year runs 1 October through September 30. So we just wrapped up our fiscal year 2021. At the end of September, we kicked off October 1 with fiscal year 2022. So in fiscal year 2021, the foundation received gifts of 7.7 million. We made over 2.1 million grants in the community. And since 1974, the foundation has granted out $40.2 million in the communities that we serve. Next slide, please. So as you take a look at the legislation that gives permission to municipalities to open these funds at the Community Foundation, please know that the Community Foundation does meet all of the criteria and definitions that's outlined in that piece of legislation. Currently, you know, we're going through re-accreditation at the Community Foundation. We were one of the first community foundations in Michigan to get this accreditation. We're in the process of going through that again. It's a little bit of a trial by fire as you go through that. There's a lot that, that you have to do to receive that, that seal. But in essence, what it says is that our policies and procedures are in line with industry standards. Next slide, please. All right. So we have lots of policies at the Community Foundation. One of the policies is we have an investment policy and strategy. So that's designed by the board. Please know that it's not me going in on a Tuesday morning and saying, I think we should reinvest this. So it's all done by the board, and it's a policy that outlines it. We also, at the foundation, have both an investment committee that meets quarterly and a finance and audit committee that meets quarterly. Next slide. This is a quick little snippet of our investment policy, and it outlines for our consultants how we, you know, we give them the ability to maneuver within the policy, but this is the policy that they have to be in compliance with. Next slide, please. And when I talk about our history rate of return, here it is, going back to 2000 and then through last year. While our fiscal year runs October 1 through September 30, when we put this report together, it really is on a calendar year, because that's what most people want to see, is what did you do in this year? And I think what's important to notice here, outside of the incredible 10-year return, is the fact that the foundation is not immune to downturns in the market. All right? So there is some risk here. And please know that I'll share this slide deck with Anna, and if you're interested in receiving it, she could, she could share it out with you. But this is our, our investment rate of return. Next slide, please. And we charge fees against the fund. So if this was a decision on council at some point to move the perpetual care funds to the Community Foundation, because of the amount of assets that you have in that fund, the fee from the foundation would be 1% annually. Next slide, please. All right. So this is the definition of a community foundation that's in the bill. I won't read it through to you, but I wanted to provide you with a checklist. We hit all the right notes on this. Next, please. All right. So now it comes down to options for council. All right? As I look at this, you know, the reason I think that there's special legislation around perpetual care funds is that community foundations have a proven track record of both transparency, accountability, and, and investment returns. So for us at the foundation, how we manage the fund doesn't really change depending on which option you go with. All right? So what I did is I took two agreements that were already in place in the state of Michigan. So the top one is an agreement that was put in play in Holland, New Zealand for their perpetual care fund. And the one below is taken from a fund agreement that was done for the city of East Jordan by the Charlevoix County Community Foundation. And in essence, I did two separate ones for you to take a look at. The first one really just says that you have access to all of the earnings and fees that are generated by the fund. The second one says that you have access to net income from the fund, and we define net income as to what our spending policy is. Traditionally, the foundation has had a 5% spending policy for most of its 47-year history. It was once in 2008, with a significant downturn in the market, that the foundation went to a 3.5%, one year, and then back up to 5%. But that's kind of the two things you'll be, you know, that you'll have to decide which one. All right? Next slide, please. So what I have, and I can share these with you, but what I have is I just have done a couple of calculations. These are projections. These are meant to show, if you would please, Annie. These are meant to show what would have happened had the city put its $1 million as a perpetual care fund with the Community Foundation in 2014, when the legislation was passed. This first example here shows if you just opened the fund, didn't take any distributions from it, what would it look like today? And you'll see that while I did take the fees as part of this spreadsheet, what you would see is that the fund today would have $1.839 million in. Next slide, please. The next page in the package, or in that little three-page thing, is what would this fund look like if you took a 5% distribution each year in accordance with our spending policy? What you will see is that at the end of this period, 2014 through today, the city would have seen distributions of a little over $400,000, and the fund would have $1.257 million in it today. And then the third sheet is if you decided to take all of the distribution of interest and earnings in, in a year where the market produced earnings. And what you will see here is that the fund would have $1 million today, and the city would have been able to receive $451,000 in support of your perpetual care funds. You know, we exist as a charitable organization, and the IRS defines charity and what's charitable. And as I read through that definition, what I think applies here is lessening the burden on government. All right? As you heard briefly how the fund has fared over the last 10 years and the amount of monies that are available this year to support the perpetual care of the cemeteries, this offers a dramatic difference. And simply, it's because we're allowed to invest in the stock market. Next slide. I think that's it. So I know that's a lot of information quickly. All right? But I wanted to leave time for questions and happy to answer them now or at any time in the future.
The 25% of all of our lot sales goes into the perpetual lot care fund, and we cannot touch that money. It goes in there, we can't even use it. We can only use the earnings.
Any questions for Patrick while he's here?
So my, my understanding is that this would be an irrevocable gift.
Correct.
Going so long near an asset on the city's book.
So that gets tricky.
Right.
All right. Yeah.
I think.
So we opened our first perpetual care fund just a couple of months back for the city of Rogers City. So I haven't gone through an audit or through some accounting procedures to see how that would fall. Oftentimes, if an agency, in this case, the, the city, opens a fund at the Community Foundation, technically, they appear on your books as an asset and on our books as a liability. I'm told that if you get accountants and lawyers in the same room, they could fight all day and not figure it out. But as I understand it, under GAAP and under OCMF, I'm going to say it's possible it may still land on your books as an asset, because it's an agency fund at the foundation. But I can get clarification on that.
I like that better than what I was originally thinking. It's probably in a restricted, a restricted fund balance.
Yes.
You can't touch it.
Correct.
Either way, you can't touch it.
Correct. But it's still with the way the accounting world works on some of those agency funds, it still is on your books as an asset and on our books as a liability. And then I just built in some language into the agreement. I mean, I know irrevocable is frightening. All right? Can be frightening. But that's how any gift to the Community Foundation is an irrevocable gift. Now, if there were unusual circumstances, is it possible that these monies could be returned to the city? Yes. And that language is reflected in both agreements. But it would be, I can't give you an example of unusual circumstance, because I haven't seen one in my five years. So I mean, it would be a highly unusual circumstance. But the way the legislation reads is that it's an irrevocable gift to the Community Foundation. But can only be used for the cemetery lots in Alpena County. So it's not like we can take that money and, and, and use it for something else that the board deems appropriate. All right? Unless, of course, something dramatic happens and the lots go away, then the board has a variance power. So I'm sure Mr. Pfeiffer will enjoy all of that language in the, in the various acts that are up there.
If we receive a distribution, it would come back to the city, and we would most likely put it back into our perpetual lot care fund as accessible money. And that's probably where we would also charge out our expenses, so that when we do get these distributions, it's not mixing in with everything else in the general fund. Make sure that we're truly using it for what we're supposed to.
So it almost sounds like you're gifting to him, and then anything of the interest he's gifting back to the city, and then it's in a usable fund for yourself. Okay? All right.
Not for myself.
Not for yourself, oh.
Yeah. So, sorry. The legislation calls for two distributions annually. So as I had thought about this, if, if this was to come to fruition, what we would probably do is send a letter out to you once a year, call or be in contact and say, do you expect to take a distribution this year? If so, how much do you want? And then we would break that into two equal payments. So you could choose to take all of it. You could choose to take none of it. So you still retain options.
And is that council option, or is that, do we leave that up to the city manager, Anna?
I guess that kind of depends. I'm not, I guess I'd have to look further into that. We would kind of gauge it, though, on what projects we have coming up at the CIP. And then, once we get caught up with those, we could help, it would help offset salaries and benefits that we pay and, and then be a relief to the general fund.
I don't disagree.
Well, the sexton and everything that he does there, plowing, mowing, that's all, that's all spent out of perpetual.
It's all in. So then the general fund, we have the temporary. It's, it's charged to that. We can't spend anything out of the perpetual lot care because we're all second.
So there's.
If we're going to get this.
There's, so even, even when there was whatever it was from the previous year, the 1,100 and some dollars, whatever it was, the interest, the interest is spent on everything associated up and to, including the individual that works there. And the plowing and every, that, that, all of that expense gets paid out of that. So I guess it wouldn't make a, you don't have to wait for a project, because there's always an expense there for that person. So.
So we have been receiving interest, a small amount that we do receive, it comes into the perpetual lot care fund, and we transfer it right out to the general fund, because that's where all our expenses, I mean, we don't have expenses in perpetual lot care fund. It has to go back to your general fund.
So as someone is purchasing a lot, would, would that theoretically go into the, in the event that we did this, that would immediately go in, or would that be stored for, in the, in the perpetual lot care fund up to a certain time? And then, so how often do you take monies? Daily?
Hourly.
Hourly.
You bet. You bet. Yeah. Yeah. So as I've, as I've seen this play out in a couple of other communities, what I've seen is that whatever money is coming in is transferred into the endowment at the Community Foundation, because I think they look for you to hold one fund, you know, not half in, half out. So gifts would come into the endowment.
Is that annually usually? Other communities are putting those into the?
When I reviewed spreadsheets, it looked like that it was done on a monthly basis as the money came in.
Okay. That's probably better, because then I can be investing right away instead of folding out to it for a year. Sure.
Oh, it's going there anyhow. Because then I'm not, I mean, you do all the accounting treasury stuff, but if you have, if you have money that comes out as a draw in the perpetual care fund, and you're putting in, and you're putting in new when someone purchases a lot, now, now that becomes an accounting burden, because, I mean, you've got both in there.
Yeah. So we would pull that out and send it to you hourly.
Yeah. So that's where the accounting of the foundation comes in. So we provide, as part of the legislation, we would provide a fund statement to the city annually that shows all of the distributions that came from the fund. Now, we just track the distribution that's requested and the amount that goes out, but according to the act, the foundation is not responsible for ascertaining that the money paid to the city is spent for the limited purposes authorized by the bill. So we would cut the check. You got, that's exactly right. That's exactly right. Yeah. So.
I feel very comfortable with it.
When you look at the numbers, it's, it's, it's tough to discount the partnership with the foundation when it comes to the proven investment performances on something like this.
And your 1% fee?
Yes.
That can, that can come out of, either come out of our draw as, would that be, would that be part of?
No.
But it doesn't, it's not.
We would take fees and still give you the full draw. Right? The act allows for principal to be invaded for fees, but as I looked at a couple of the examples, so while that's a possibility, I'm not so sure that that necessarily has to be the case in the way that it's set up.
Yeah.
So it says you can't invade, but it says you can invade. So I think that it could be set up in a way that we never invaded principal, except in unusual circumstances, and the fund could still grow over time and provide a significant increase in revenue over what's happening now.
Right. And rather than invade the principal, can it be paid by us from, from our draw, from our interest?
The fees?
Yeah. Are the fees allowable under the act for what we can spend?
Yes.
Just on?
Yeah. But we would take the, it's kind of a different accounting thing. So you would get your, you would have to decide if you want, I, I think you would have to decide if you wanted to come in under our spending plan, or if you wanted to come in under all fees and interest. But we could still have the conversation around where fees come from. It's a nominal amount, $10,000 a year on $1 million, especially if we're looking at, hopefully, continued good sales on the investment returns.
True. And what's your policy for where that goes?
For where what goes?
That 1%.
So that come?
To that?
I can. So we are able to operate under fees at the Community Foundation. So the fees that we generate from our funds cover our operating expenses. So you would help keep the lights on, help keep staff paid. But you would also help us fund our community impact grants and money that goes back out into the community. So yeah, the $10,000 would be absorbed, and it would do good.
I expected that was your answer by that.
Well, I'm not going to say anything else.
Excellent. So the, so the plan would be that, that we would be able to absorb this. If we got any questions that we might not have, once we look into like our distribution options and things like that, we'll contact you if we have any. And then you'll put something together, what, for council as soon as next meeting, or?
Could we, if we know which option, I guess, we want to look forward with?
And I would, I mean, I would like to see what your, what your suggestion is. You're the one that's going to be.
I kind of see both ways, but Patrick's new spreadsheet here, it seems like the 5% is probably the way to go. That's the first one, right?
The first one is zero, if you took zero distributions and you just let the fund grow. The second page would be based on a 5% distribution. And that's typically what the foundation has operated under through our history, and we can see the power of that in building the endowment. I mean, there's charts I can share that shows the difference between 4% versus 6% and what that does over time. And it took me a while to understand it, because it's crazy math, right? How can I get 5% and after 20 years, I have more money than what I started with?
I thought exactly.
Yes. So it's crazy math, but the math works. And so I think what the 5% would allow you to do is to have the capital needed for your improvements and for whatever you want to use it for, for the perpetual care. But we'll also allow the fund to grow over time, which will just continue to provide more and more monies to the city for, for those services.
And once you choose one, you're locked in.
You know, I mean, I hate to say locked in, locked in, because, you know, it's a relationship. But none of these are old enough to where they've changed yet. So I think that that could, I, I think that could, you know, it depends on where the fund balances are at that time when you have that discussion, but I think it could be possible.
Because my goal would be to make as much money so we can make improvements at the cemetery and not have to take it out of the general fund.
In looking at their 20-year history of returns, they've only had five years that were negative. They had some really good years, too.
Thank goodness. Yes, we did. Yes, we did. There are certain investment vehicles that are afforded institutions that have money to invest. So some opportunities that come our way are, you have to have 50 million in the pool to even see them. So we've been very fortunate with the growth and the opportunity and then the management of those funds over time.
So when you, when the 5% is calculated, is it on the principal or is it on principal earnings? So the amount could go up every year?
Yes. Yeah. So what we do is we would take the principal plus what we call the reserve, and the reserve is where any investment gains or losses. All right? It's where we take fees from. It's also where the 5% comes from, because remember, you're not supposed to touch the corpus or the principal. So. Bring me back to your question, please. Sorry, I got, I got lost in my own corridors there for a second.
5% is the principal, isn't it?
Oh, right. So when we calculate spendable each year, we'll take whatever the, the corpus or the principal is, and we would add in any earnings if they were there, and then we would calculate 5% on that.
So when we see 5% on $1 million, it's going to? So when we see 5% on a million dollars, it's going to be 5% on a million plus.
Yes. And so if you take a peek at that second page, what we'll see here, and this is the one at the top that says with annual distributions according to separate spending policy and UPMFA, what you'll see year end balances there is you'll see what the balance is, fund balance is at the bottom after the return in 2014. You'll see that with the negative return, the fund balance dipped, right? To below the million. And then you'll see again a dip and then it will gain, right? Now, UPMFA allows the community foundation to spend from underwater funds. So traditionally the foundation is allowed to invade principal each year if the board decides to do so. All right. So that's where you'll see a dip. Um, and then on the second page, we just kept everything at a million dollars with the city using all of the earnings. So really you had two uh, years where there were no distributions, uh, from the fund.
I like that option too.
Yeah. Well, either way, the city would be getting between 403 and $450,000 over that period of time, which I think is significant for the, the, the projects that you have and then the care you want. You know, in the 5%, you'll see that the fund balance has grown to 1.2 million. Um, can you go back on those slides, Charlie, please? Just what there were, this is the one that, that I'm, uh, this one right here. Yeah. Where you can see the fund balance will actually grow over time.
And there's good and bad to that balance that we can never touch money.
Yeah, I think for myself, looking at the options, I think the better option would probably be the 5%. I like the idea that you've got the money staying above and beyond the 5% in the fund to gain additional interest, but then the city realizes a steady income, you know, more or less on that. It's not an up and down, you know, when you have those bad years, you're getting nothing and then all of a sudden you're scrambling to, you know, figure out what we're going to do with this where it's like budgeting your light bill, you know, it's just, it's a little bit easier to make it all the way through. So just my thoughts, I would go, it was my, my decision, which heck, yes it is, but still.
I was kind of thinking was, maybe just, um, get your opinions on where you are as far as your riskiness. You want to take the chance with the earnings or conservative 5%?
I think if we look back at the history of the other funds that we deal with on the retirement board, you know, for both of the investments and it's the hard decisions we had to make there, I would say, I would rather see us do something like this because I think for our future, it's going to be a better investment for the whole than what we're doing right now. Cause right now we're putting a lot of money out of the general fund, you know, with nothing, you know, in the perpetual fund gaining a thousand bucks doesn't really cover too much at all. So, um, myself, I think it's worth the risk to get into this and we've proven that in those other funds. So. I don't know what the rest of council's thinking, but you know, we've got some, Cindy and I have some insight in what we were able to accomplish on the other board and it was.
Don't you go with Roger City chose or can you?
Yeah, Roger City went with net income spending policy at the community foundation. Their fund is also $143,000 in value.
So they're subject to the higher fee. They're subject to the 1.25 because of their balance.
Correct.
So I wanted, I'm so sorry. What happened? I wanted to touch on something. I think it was Cindy that asked, um, so if we decided in 10 years and that, and let's, let's say we go with earnings, that we want to go to, um, the community foundation's spending policy, 5% or whatever it's set at, um, could we do that? And you said it hasn't happened yet, but I just wanted to clarify that if we decide upfront, we want to complete a whole lot of projects within that 10 years and then we want to go to a more conservative spending policy.
I mean, I think that the board would be open to that conversation, but know that the board would have to approve of that change, right? Because of the irrevocable nature. But if it's no longer the meeting the needs of Northeast Michigan, then that can trigger the variance power, right? But that's supposed to come from internally, not really externally. So, uh, I'm not quite sure how that would work, but you know, we're here because we think it's a win-win-win, right? And we want to keep it being a win-win-win. So I think that, that whoever is there in the board, I think would be open to that conversation.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So earlier in your slides, you showed two distribution options and did you say that one of them was Zeeland and the other one was Holland?
One, I'm sorry, one was Zeeland and, or Holland-Zeeland. They hold both down there. I don't know which one that was from. And the other one was from East Jordan, uh, Charlevoy Community Foundation. And Charlevoy also went with net earnings on, on there. So their spending policy, their community foundation is at four and a half percent, but that's what the city of East Jordan went with.
And how much did they invest?
I don't know. I don't know. Yeah.
Being nosy.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we're transparent, so I'm sure I can find that out.
So the ones that you have with the foundation, so far everyone has chosen the spending policy.
We only have the one. Yeah. Here, here, yeah, yeah. They chose that. But if you come into the foundation and you open an endowed fund, you don't get to pick, right? You get 5%. It's part of our spending policy on an endowment. Uh, this is the first thing that I've seen that allows, uh, an entity to choose what they receive from the fund.
Action proof? I mean, yeah, that's, that's what we decided on that we could do a resolution if it waits until December 6th.
Nice, Patrick. Question?
Yep.
Did, did Cindy ever choose to take less than the 5%?
Yes. So we could reach out to you and say, this is what's available for this year. Do you want all of it, some of it, or none of it?
And so it could, it could have amounts in there from previous years that maybe we didn't take.
I don't think that in this case, I think that you decide what you want and then we move that into spendable. So I don't think we would do an automatic move into spendable. And then if you didn't use it, we would carry that over year to year. You would decide what you wanted. We would move that. We would divide it into two equal checks to the city, uh, sent that year is how I understand it.
If we decided not to take it all, it, after that year, it's not spendable anymore?
Correct. It, correct. But it would be in earnings. So if you had a year where you had a downturn in the market and you needed money and you had built up that reserve, you could still have a distribution. Gets muddy quick, doesn't it?
Yes.
And that's not the right word, but it, it can get complicated.
If we were to take the 5% and let's say we not need to use it all, how long can we hold on to that or would that have to be put somewhere if we don't use it all that year?
I think it just stays in our perpetual lack care fund as, um, as spendable unrestricted fund balance.
Okay. So we could, and, and we could technically take the 5% and if we only use 2% of that, of that, um, you'd be able to keep it as a rainy day fund basically for a year where maybe, maybe there's a dip.
It would be sitting there almost like they're not earning very much money.
Okay.
Sitting bank.
And then once we don't, once we answer your, come to her.
Nope, nope.
Once we answer your question, what are you going to, what are you, what's your draw going to be this year? And we say, we're not going to take one. We don't have enough, big enough projects. You're going to say, okay. So you're not going to draw anything out, but by the end of that year, something came up before the year end, October 1st, September 30th. Did you just say that we, that we could still? Do we have that one day?
I see, I see what you're saying in your example. So I, I think that it totally could work that way, Mayor. So we call you on one December and you say, we don't want to draw. I call you on one June and you say, we want to draw.
Yeah.
All right. So I mean, we could look at doing two opportunities throughout the year as a possibility. I mean, it's really figuring out what works best on your end, right? Um, as to how that might work.
What if something at the chapel, something breaks or whatever, we need to fix it right now. It would be nice to, I guess, tap those resources.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And I'm not sure how that works, right? I mean, candidly. So what if you took money from the general fund to do something at the cemetery and then got a draw from the cemetery? Could you use that to, to reimburse or to pay for those services?
If I have a proper documentation, you prove it to the auditors that that's what we used it for.
Yep. Yep. That's what you would probably do now.
Right. Yeah.
And if we took a draw once a year, we could make more money as we've left it, see no longer or no? Doesn't it work that way?
Well, if I knew what was going to happen from month to month or year to year in the stock market, uh, it would be, it would be something. Yeah.
Money every year.
Yep.
Yeah, that is true.
Yeah. I, it seems like the logical thing for us to do after all these years. I, I don't have an issue with that at all, but perhaps, perhaps you might even just talk to the clerk treasures in these other communities and ask them, what, what, why did they, why did they choose what they chose? Um, it just might be helpful. Um, cause that seems like the only glaring question, right?
Yeah.
Everything else seems pretty.
Well, if they have smaller amounts of money, like somebody had 143.
City of Roger City.
Then they need that money that they get from that. They need to do.
I'm guessing Zeeland and Zeeland slash Holland is probably significantly more. They're bigger than we are. But I don't know that.
Yeah. I'm not sure. And I don't think they've taken a draw since they've opened the fund either.
Right. And we would have that option as well to just not take a draw. I mean.
But I, I can help make introductions or connections on that and if that could be helpful.
Yeah. Um, yeah. For Roger City, I can reach out to Carrie Cass, she's a city clerk.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll leave it at that and we'll just wait for your recommendation at our, whenever you're ready.
We're going to be there forever. Just let me know, you just let me know when you're ready. That's all right. Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it. Appreciate the consideration. Thank you. Thanks so much.
All right. Anything on that? So we gave a recommendation. Um, yeah. Next up, uh, first reading of ordinance 21 dash 465, which amends the city of Alpine zoning ordinance, article 2, 5, and 7. Bill?
You guys got Montiel's synopsis as well.
Yes, sir.
All right. So there, um, the first one is an ordinance, uh, that would amend article 2, article 5, and article 7. So I'm going to not skim this, but I want to summarize.
Denise is online too. I see if, um, anything comes up as questions.
Okay.
Actually, yes.
So section 2.1 will be adding, uh, a definition of food truck in food truck park. And then the table of community uses and special land uses go through each one of the zoning districts. So it starts with the waterfront development district and it goes through each one of those to show, uh, that is permitted. Then under, uh, section 7.42, that's adding a new section. So once again, we add food trucks, food truck parks. It goes through the approval process. So zoning permit would be required to do this. Um, the ordinance also lays out that if any of these individual provisions become separable, it would still save the rest of the ordinance. Effective date would be upon the expiration of seven days after publication.
There is actually one other amendment on there on the table of uses on page one, which is the veterinary services line. So it's the, or the amendment is in all food trucks because, uh, city staff has been going through this and, and trying to take a look at what uses, um, are missing or we feel aren't in maybe the, all the districts that they belong in. And so veterinary services was the other one where it's expanded out to the CCD and the B2, which it wasn't allowed in before as a special use. So that's the only other thing besides food trucks that are addressed in this amendment.
And, uh, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to catch up really quick on the, on the veterinary. So we're just, we're just adding it to the, we're just adding it to the language of the ordinance to be, to be, and that would be reviewed by the zoning board or the planning commission if said veterinary, veterinary clinic wanted to open in the city?
Right. It would, it would be a special use. It's listed as a special use in the B3 right now and a, and a permitted use in the I, I1. So it would still be a special use. So it's still become before planning commission for that approval. And then properties within 300 feet would be notified and they'd have to be a public hearing for that special use approval.
Very good. Okay. Any other questions before we wait until second reading? Yep. All right. Thank you, Bill and Denise on that one. There's another one right behind it. Uh, this is going to be the first reading of ordinance 21, 466, which amends the city of Alpine zoning map.
This would amend section one and would be amended as follows. So parcel located at 1010, south of Levittown shall be rezoned from RM2 to B1. I would have to either Montiel or me speak to what specifically is intended for this parcel. I'm not aware of that. And then there's also, once again, a separability clause, a saving clause. The effective date would be seven days upon the expiration of the publication of the notice of doubt.
We do have the owners there as well.
Do you want to?
The property that you see on the chart there in yellow is B1. So it's just that corner section. Um, so it would continue to flow as B1 up to the corner basically, um, that, that intersection.
What? Right. Um, so, so if I'm, if I recall from the planning commission that, and that this kind of, there's no other that, so that whole street would now be the same if this is approved. It isn't right now, but then, but it would be. Okay. Any questions?
No, just wondering why I was like.
Don't ever ask.
I know.
It's like, yeah, perhaps they just did one at a time over time.
A bit. All right.
Quick question. Um, normally our orders is state of that tendings after 12.
Yeah, we, it, it, there'd be no specific rule. It says it has to be seven or 10, it could be 14.
Right. The zoning enabling act says after seven.
Okay. There you go. Different acts for different.
But you can, I think that city council can change that. I think you can designate a different date, but if you haven't, it's the seven, after seven.
That's fine. And with no other questions on that, and that'll come back for a second reading at our next meeting as well. Okay, under new business, we have rural development grant and Shannon Smolinski, pastor is here to introduce that.
In October, the Michigan Department of Agricultural and Rural Development released a request for proposals for the 2022 rural development grant funding. Um, these funds are used in rural communities for improvements that will help for infrastructure development, rural capacity building, business development and talent and development training. Um, the grant match are capped out at a hundred thousand dollars and we have to match 30% or $30,000. Um, after some discussion with the harbor advisory committee in reviewing the grant application, we felt that we could possibly pursue this grant to do improvements to the marina shop and storefront. Tried to make some improvements to that building. Over the last few years, it's, it's gotten worse and worse and worse. Um, It's at the point now where we need to do something with it in order to try to make some improvements to it for the benefit, betterment of the marina and everything else. So the proposed plan right now is to pursue this grant and try to pay for cosmetic facade improvements to the building, siding and windows, do some improvements inside to make the inside of the storefront a little bit more user friendly and inviting to somebody wanting to come in and possibly rent that space. Do some improvements for the facilities inside there for the employees and put some heat in the shop because that will give us the ability to possibly use that shop year round by whoever runs it. So our thought right now is, is that we need to make the match at it. It'll be awarded in February. It's a really short term grant. It's eighteen months. We have to have it spent and done. So we would actually probably try to start some of that work before the end of the fiscal year. So that means I need to make a portion of the grant match this fiscal year and the rest of it next year. Back in August, I received bids for the potable water system for Prentice Street. It was over budget. We had budgeted thirty thousand. We had a bid come in for forty. After looking at the project, seeing what was involved with it and everything else, I believe that my guys can accomplish that work if we put ten thousand dollars towards materials and do it that way instead. So my suggestion right now is to reject that bid and let us use ten thousand of that thirty thousand to do that project and then use the additional twenty thousand left over in that budget line item and move it to the match for this grant if we get it. And then through the CIP and budgeting process, we would budget for the additional fifteen thousand that we need to make the match.
Was that budgeted in the water fund?
No, potable water that was budgeted in the marina fund. It was a marina project. It's not the, the water fund. We did discuss it at the harbor advisory board. We kind of went back and forth between a couple of different projects and decided that this one was probably the best fit, number one, for this grant, number two, for the, the overall revitalization of the marina. So therefore they approved me asking for permission to submit this grant with the proposed things. So right now, I guess my recommendation is that we reject the potable water bid for being over budget. And then I would also recommend that you approve for the submittal of the rural development fund grant for the remodeling of the marina shop and storefront building utilizing the twenty thousand dollars proposed from the surplus amount from the potable water system and then commit to the remaining fifteen thousand dollars as we go through the CIP and budgeting process.
And if it's awarded in February, you would still have that time?
I would still have time in order to put that through.
Through, okay.
If we had to, for some reason we didn't get it, then we could adjust and try to come up with some other plan.
Okay. Is the long term, and I don't, it might seem like an insulting question because you just proposed fixing the building, but I don't mean it that way. Is the long term process of the marina to keep that building?
It's got good bones right now. So it's one of those things. I think we can salvage that building in the long term or for short term, long term, you know.
Okay.
Fifteen, twenty years. Think about how long it, your siding lasts on your house, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years. It's kind of a good solution there. It would give us time at that point in time to do all the other improvements we need to do at the marina.
Okay.
And then if we wanted to look in the future at a different building or a multi-function building that has kind of been proposed out there, that is something that, at that point in time, we could go back and do at that point in time. But even to demolition that building, I was told it was like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So putting a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty-five into siding and stuff could be a better solution just even for not trying to get rid of it. I think last time I talked to a builder about it, it was one point two to replace that building.
What is the, so, and I've been, I've been in the bottom part. Yeah, certainly use some improvements. Will any of this trickle up to the upstairs, to the apartment that is upstairs or?
We're hoping. I'm hoping a portion of that money can be used up there to do some improvements in there to make that into possibly short term rental.
Awesome. I think the whole thing sounds great. It's, it's been long overdue. Any questions or issues or?
Questions? I think it's a great use of, and I, you know, applaud you for finding a grant, you know, and being able to find a way to get the matching funds like that. It makes perfect sense. I like the idea that we're gonna invest in that down there in something that is gonna be visible right away because I think you're right. You need to take care of the short term ISOs and then we can invest in the other, you know, the other things down in that area. So it sounds like a very good idea as well to me.
All right, so you propose that we allow that?
I gotta do two, I think. There's two.
There's two, yeah.
Yeah, there's two. The first one is, is I move that we reject potable water system bids for being over budget.
Okay.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Councilman Osberg?
Yes.
Mayor Walla Dora? Airport Tom Johnson? Congressman Mitchell?
Yes.
All right, that's the one. And we approve the submitted rural development grant for remodeling the Alpena Maria shop using a twenty thousand dollar budget surplus and commit to remain fifteen thousand during the CIP process.
Second.
Councilman Osmond?
Yes.
Mayor Walla Dora? Airport Tom Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Shannon. Appreciate it. Uh, next up is the DDA parking recommendations. Anna Gentry, the DDA director is here.
Good evening. My favorite topic. Um, and it's November second, twenty twenty-one board meeting. The Alpena Downtown Development Authority discussed changing certain parking policies in downtown Alpena. After city council requested that we research these certain options after your October fourth meeting, where concerns about the availability of on-street parking for customers were shared by downtown business owners. Over the last month, the DDA parking committee with input from city staff has researched other communities' parking policies and discussed changes to our current parking policies. At its November second meeting, the Alpena DDA Board of Directors made the following recommendations pertaining downtown parking policies downtown for Alpena City Council to consider. Primarily that the city consider implementing an escalating fine system for repeat offenders. Secondarily, that the city consider prohibiting overnight parking on streets within the DDA district year round. And lastly, that the city with the DDA start to explore the long-term strategy of pay-for-parking options within the downtown district. These options were attached with what I sent along. We are very well aware that parking has remained an issue within the downtown for many years and decades. And we hope that these three options will help us develop a long-term strategy to prioritize convenient on-street parking for downtown visitors and customers as our downtown continues to grow. Um, so if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them. But I did talk to Rachel Smolinski today and there were some questions about her parking permit system. So I can share those right now and then after that, if there's questions, I'm happy to answer those. So currently, we manage a parking permit system throughout the downtown district that we were authorized by city council to do a certain number of years ago. So we currently rent out spaces behind the center building, which is lot one, in Collegian Plaza, which is lot seven, behind Salon one twenty-five, which is lot eight, and then behind Red Brick Tap and Barrel, which is lot four, which is a lot that the DDA owns, as well as the parking lot on Lockwood Street, which is also a lot that the DDA owns. There are forty-six total spaces available throughout those lots that we're able to rent out. As of today, there are ten spaces rented out throughout the district. Behind the center building in Collegian Plaza are primarily the most popular ones because of their proximity to downtown apartments. This program is prioritizing downtown residents. So downtown residents have first choice and then if there's spaces available, downtown business owners or employees or anyone could rent them out. But the understanding is if a resident comes along and needs a space that we refund the, the other business owner, whoever else has that rented out. These permits are twenty dollars a month, except for be on Lockwood Street, which is fifteen dollars a month. So in addition to this program, just a general overview of our parking. So there are over a thousand public parking spaces throughout the downtown district. So our DDA parking ambassador monitors the short-term spaces as well as for other violations such as parking in handicap space and parking in those reserved spaces. She currently works about thirty-five hours a week. Last year, there were about five thousand dollars in parking citations that were paid. The year previous, it was just underneath six thousand dollars. And on a given year, we spend anywhere between twenty and twenty-two thousand dollars in wages. So this is not something that makes funds for, for the DDA, but it's something that we do to try to keep those spaces primarily open for customers and other short-term visitors to the downtown.
Always a fun. So the cost, so the cost of the, the first request to raise the, have the escalating fine, from what I understand, is gonna be somewhere between two thousand and three thousand dollars upfront costs.
Correct.
To books.
Correct. And after speaking with Chief Jet, this would only apply to DDA issued citations because of how we both track them. So these would be to replace all of our parking, parking violation ticket books that we have.
Yeah. So, and I don't know, here's, here's my thing, to be honest with you. I've always been pretty much the guy in the room that says that we don't have a parking problem in Alpena. And we don't have a parking problem in Alpena. We go, go somewhere. We walk, you go to Petoskey, you go to any of these other communities, go to Chicago, you go, big or small. You get out of your car, you might walk a block, two blocks to get to where you're gonna go. And I, I don't wanna rant, but going to Walmart and going back to the furthest thing in the store, which is milk, and coming back to your parking spot where you were is way further than anywhere that you'll park in downtown Alpena. With that said, I'm, I'm not convinced that it's worth two to three thousand dollars to upgrade our books to find someone for excessive tickets when we might be talking about, you didn't have the data, I don't think, the last time. But how many, how many particular vehicles do you think that will actually affect? More than a half dozen?
I wouldn't say more than a half dozen.
Okay, so we're gonna spend two, between two and three thousand dollars to issue consecutive tickets to less than ten people throughout the course of however long it goes before I can convince everyone that putting in meters is the way to go. So if we were to discuss putting in meter systems, because we've had consultants come to Alpena several times, maybe even perhaps before you took your position. What's their turnaround once we say, yeah, we wanna do that? Are you aware of that from the different presentations they've given?
Yeah, when we had a parking ambassador from one of those companies attend in twenty nineteen, he said it was about a six-month turnaround from the day we say, yep, this is what we're doing to installation. But a lot of that would require us having a plan of where the meters would go. Are they smart meters? Are they cash and credit? Are they only credit? Are they pay stations that can accommodate a variety of spaces? So once we had that figured out, at least back in twenty nineteen, that was the estimate. It was about six months from we're doing this to installation. To installation being complete.
And they also come and help determine, or is that somebody completely different that helps us determine what might work best?
Correct.
All on us.
That is something that Tom Neff is the consultant I've talked to in the past, that they've installed it for Traverse City, Petoskey. And that's something they could help guide us on based on who's using the parking spaces, which lots are most used, things like that. A lot of that information we have based on just observing downtown, but based on some of our goals for that as well, they could help us.
Because I wanna have, I wanna have the least amount of impact on our visitors. Okay, because I get feedback from visitors. I've been sent, I've been sent tickets. I'm not paying this, but thank you for inviting me into your town. So, well, that has an impact because what we do in Alpena, what our residents have to do is fine. It's one thing. But what are, what I'm getting to is that we invite people. We want tourists. We want vacationers. They all come. The last thing we want them to do is leave with a ticket because they didn't realize that they were in a spot that, that was only two hours or something like that. So, and they're not gonna be repeat offenders. They're, so. But the vast majority of vacationers and people that travel and, and our own residents know how to use, know how to use the parking. It's right on your, it's right on your phone. And if you don't know how to use it, it only takes you literally like five minutes to figure it out. I wanna go that way. I want this to just be put to bed so it just doesn't keep coming up every however many years, two thousand nineteen to now, to whenever. That's gonna be my take. I don't wanna invest two to three thousand dollars in this if, if I have other council members and the DDAs, you know, recommendation that we're gonna end up going to meters anyhow. I just don't wanna do that for a very short term. If that's the direction we're going, then I'm gonna feel like we just wasted a bunch of money on books that we're gonna throw away. That's where I'm at.
Yeah, I would kind of reiterate that with the mayor too. It's just like, you know, we, we do have a parking problem. We're eventually gonna fill those thousand spaces. We really are. And we're, we're gonna need more downtown. We, do we know, you know, there's, there's places you can walk to. But it's kinda, in my mind, goes along with a housing report that we did years ago. You know, and, and at that time, when I read that report, I said, you know, that we have a housing issuing in Alpena and everybody's house was for sale here. I thought he was crazy. Well, guess what, folks? We have one. And now, I'll tell you what happened, like in the early eighties, everything was moving out towards the malls and the townships and the bigger indoor shopping. That is kind of changing now. A lot of communities now are redoing and getting people to come back downtown. And I think we're on the verge of seeing that happen as well. So I agree with the mayor in the fact that, you know, we do need to start looking at how we're going to pay for expanding the parking in the downtown area. And we can't put a parking structure downtown if we have free on-street parking around it. It'll never pay for itself. I think those parking spaces in a, in a structure are right around like twenty-eight, thirty-five thousand, somewhere in that area. That's a lot of money to do that. Are we gonna need that eventually? If you come down here on a Sunday afternoon or a Saturday evening without all of the office workers in town, you will see all the primary spots full. And I've experienced that. And I've had to walk from behind down here, which doesn't bother me at all, but others it will. And so, and I think eventually you're gonna continue as you add restaurants and other downtown hotels. We need to take a long-term approach on this. So I think the mayor is right. We need to take a hard look at meters. We need to take a hard look at what we're gonna do to expand parking within the next five to eight years minimum. I mean, if not faster, because I think you're gonna see this downtown really pop. One more hotel and I think you're gonna start seeing developers come into this town wanting to put up or improve other buildings for other shops because as we improve the product mix downtown, it is really gonna start to see a lot of different businesses wanting to invest down here. So that's just my take on it.
And if I can add to that too, I think that's why we're seeing some of these parking conversations come up in the last few months or so. Because even in the last year, with the addition of red brick, hop side, Glicks has their own private parking lot, but all these businesses that have relocated downtown, some of these businesses have huge capacities. You know, red brick can accommodate a hundred people on a given night. That's a lot of cars. That's strain, not straining our, what we have available, but we consider some of these other projects that are coming. The antique mall renovation, the state theater, those are some really high-capacity businesses that, those people will need to park somewhere. So that's just the long term where we're going, which is exciting, but presents some problems in the meantime.
Downtown's gonna continue to expand. I'm from Second Avenue, but it's gonna move out. You know, there's gonna be more and more businesses and developers that wanna build here. But the first question a developer's gonna come in and ask is, how was the downtown and what's the plan to expand? You know, so that's something that has to be a consideration on our part as well. So.
Do you know what the cost is for a meet, like if we were to do, like, let's say the job, because I think we have an older population and I know, I don't think all of them are gonna get on their iPhone and check if they're gonna want that, that change option. So if we were to have a hybrid where it takes credit and cash, do you know what the estimate would be on one of those?
When we got the last estimate, it was, I think, between seven and ten thousand per pay station. But that's something, you know, that I think the DDA, we're seeking guidance too. If there's interest in getting more answers to these questions, we're happy to do that. But if there's no interest in even pursuing pay, pay-for-parking options and it's not a good use of anyone's, anyone's time, if there's no interest in that. But based on the last few years, I believe it was between seven and ten thousand for the multi-space pay stations, and then maybe around a thousand for some of the more individual old coin ones per space.
Yeah, I think everyone is pretty much going to the signs now with the pay station in there. It's more cost effective. And I'm just in general, and too, has there been any research on your part to find out what communities don't have paid parking, because I think we're one of the last ones, just from, you know, my observation.
Yeah, from looking at what other how other downtowns monitor it, we're truly one of the few that has enforced time limited free parking. Like Bay City was one of the other ones, but they just gave the monitoring back to the city, so the DDA is not doing it anymore. But even like Towas, they don't have enforced parking at all, and they don't have meters. So Charlevoy just moved to meters, Petoskey, Traverse City. Those are bigger downtowns than ours, but if we want to grow that way, we're seeing a lot of other communities install them. And that's something that, you know, Charlevoy, they're shutting theirs off in the winter. So I mean, there's a lot of flexibility with some of these options based on what we need and what what the demand is for parking downtown.
And and do you have parking meters in your CIP? I mean, is it in the CIP? Have you?
Yeah.
When when in the CIP are parking meters, do they come up?
I want to say it's four or five years. It's one of the later ones that we had parking modifications in there.
So how would we pay for this? I mean, if we said, okay, forget all of this other stuff, let's just hop to meters and have meters within six months, how do we pay for it?
We move it up. We can move stuff back, we can move stuff up.
Yeah, I believe, maybe Rachel can speak to this as well. I believe other DDAs could get a type of bond. For the initial installation and then the revenue. I mean, when you look at the revenues that VA has for itself.
It's going to come from that. I understand.
Well, and and there's always an option you can do a phased in approach to, you know, so maybe it's, I mean, it's easier if you can implement it all at the same time, but, you know, maybe you do a couple streets. You know, the the main streets, the most pressured parking spaces. So there's that option. But I mean, I think it's something you'd have to plan for with a price tag of two hundred thousand dollars for multiple years. So it may be four years out before you can put that money back and still accomplish your other projects. So, yeah, I mean, it absolutely just would need to come up on the priority list for CIP. There may be grants out there, I don't know. You know, I think if you did a special assessment, you would have to put that specifically in your plan, but that is an option as well.
A special assessment.
In the downtown. That's one of the ways that the DDA can fund itself, but you just have to actually, there's a whole process that you have to go through, and it is, and you have to name your project specifically. And other DDAs use special assessments as a regular basis to fund projects.
Well, just to keep in mind, they didn't want special assessments for snow removals, so parking meters.
Well, and it can be a certain length of time. And, you know, I'm not advocating for one funding source over another. I'm just letting you know what's out there.
Yeah.
These meters would come from DDA funds if there's no grants.
Right, that's at least how I've seen it, is if the DDA, you know, funds the installation, manages the system and keeps keeps the revenues, but the revenues go back to sustain the system, or in some cases could go towards a garage bond or snow removal or beautification or parking lot improvements or some of these other projects as well. I'm not aware of too many cities that manage the pay for parking systems that have a DDA just because they are primarily in the DDA district, so it kind of makes sense to do it that way.
I'm also, and I again, I've asked this question several times because I work downtown, you know, so and I know that some communities, what they do is they they go to a monthly fee for their downtown employees during the week where they have a certain lot or whatever, you know, so they're not paying the annual four hour rate or whatever it is. It's a flat lower cost rate for the employees who are down here, but they're still contributing to the DDA, so.
Yeah.
And it's something also that, you know, we can look into. As I know, right now, there's a lot of, you know, employees in the downtown area here, but.
Yeah, before the pandemic, which I'm sure it's only increased with newer businesses, our estimate was like upwards of eight hundred employees within the district from various offices and shops.
And and I'm going to say this because because you brought it up, and this is all, and I talked to Rachel about this earlier. A pet peeve of mine, that there's so many reserved spaces in the DDA. And there's forty six reserved and only ten are rented. I think we need to take some of those out of reserve so that they're open to the public. I just do. I mean, there's literally thirty six spaces and business owners, and I'm sorry if you're a business owner, but if you're a business owner, you can park away and walk to. A business owner shouldn't have the opportunity to rent one of those spaces that's right close to their shop because that should be there for a customer. Those are those parking spaces are worth money. I just don't think they should be rented to business owners. I just don't. So that's my two cents on that.
One of the things I brought up with Rachel earlier was employees with disabilities or anything like this about having not having to walk three blocks to get into their point of employment like this. And you talked about rentable spots behind the businesses on Second Avenue. Do the employee, do the employers know about this, or should they know about this to accommodate ADA?
It is something that I usually send out this notification, like on November first or right before, when the overnight snow snow restrictions go into effect. So it is something that we put out to businesses. And there is one employee whose employer provides them with a parking space because there is spaces available that has limited mobility. So it is something that if it's available, you know, they still have to pay for the permit, but it is an option.
Parking on the street, are there, are there or are there going to be spots available for handicap parking?
We've looked into it a little bit. I look at Steve. I don't know if you want to give a an update on that one.
Something that we we proposed, I know in the past, and it was we council ultimately decided not to pursue it at that time. It's something we can always talk about, but what we what we have to understand is that it widens the whole parking. You can't just widen one parking stall. You have to widen the whole lane to a fourteen foot lane. And then you have to have intermittent areas that are protected areas where those those folks can get out of their cars. And so now you have to have curb drops in the middle of of the block so that they can get out and then get safely up onto the curb in the sidewalk areas. That doesn't play well with a lot of the, you know, the bike racks and tables and seating areas and things like that. So it would have to be something that's not just going in, just putting one or two in. It's that be a thought process and you have to go through and it would have to be a design change to some areas, some parts.
You're talking about on like Second Avenue. You would have to identify those closest to the curbs at the corners. That would be identified as handicap parking, but do we not have to have some handicap parking down?
Not required to have any on street handicap, no, because we provide it in the private lots or public lots.
I think the issue is, I recall when we were talking about last time, and if I understood what you just said correctly, we've gotten every lane down there now has got to go to fourteen foot versus two foot wide, basically. So we're narrowing it.
And actually, it's the the lines are, they're about eight foot off the curb. It's like fourteen foot, fifteen or fourteen.
So if you get too wide out there on one side, you could possibly eliminate the additional parking.
Yeah, this is great dialogue, but let's, I want to get back to. I want to make sure that we stay focused with the presentation that's been handed. I mean, that's always a topic of conversation.
That's a big part.
It's a big topic. But yeah, that's a different topic than what we're dealing with right now. So let's let's get back to this. I I I don't know. I was fine with it when escalating thing, when it came up, I was fine with it until I saw that it came with this ridiculous price tag, and I'm only saying ridiculous because talking about three thousand dollars worth of books, ticket books, right? So I don't know. DDA going to pick that up?
Ideally, no, but 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 it is something, I mean, usually when the city police orders ticket books, we just split the order based on how many we use and how many they use. So that's how we've done it in the past, but that is a big expense for us in our normal budget that takes away from something else that we do.
But so if I understood you correctly, this is only going to affect this escalation escalating violations is only going to affect the DDA.
Correct, with the overtime.
But we have to buy. No, I'm talking, you're right.
Yeah.
So so the so the city police department for their ticket books that they use everywhere else has already been paid for for this fiscal year.
Right.
And you bought half of them, right, or whatever, telling me.
So this would just be for us to replenish our full stock with new ticket books, essentially.
Can I can I ask a question? Do you have to buy, is this a year's worth? Is this a year's worth of ticket books or?
This would be, these notes were based on like a thousand tickets. The last order we got with the city police was in twenty nineteen, I believe, so we still have quite a few that are left over. So this wouldn't be like an annual thing. This would probably be.
Have to buy two thousand dollars worth.
Right.
Could buy a thousand dollars worth of ticket books to get us through.
Right, I don't know.
Yeah, usually we just order them with the city police on like an as needed basis.
Yeah, though, is there a discount for buying a certain quantity though? So if you buy less, it might be more expensive. I don't know what that number is, but.
Yeah, like these numbers were based on however many we ordered, which I think were like fifty six cents a piece if you did, you know, two thousand, twenty five hundred versus if you do less, they're going to be more than that. If you do more, they're going to be less than that. And these might have gone up too. This is just kind of a rough estimate to to replenish what we have from that order. And moving forward, what we would.
Just real quick, so the escalating fines, if they're, it would only apply to DDA issued overtime parking. So would we in essence have two different fine amounts depending on who's writing the ticket? Am I correct that if it's an officer, it'd always be a flat amount?
We talked with Chief Jet, and currently the city police doesn't monitor the overtime parking downtown. It's exclusively DDA, but sometimes they will issue like overnight parking or handicap things like that, but they don't currently monitor and check in cars like we do, so. Hypothetically, their tickets wouldn't be affected because they don't write tickets for that anyway, and they just wouldn't for that moving forward either.
How how would you monitor, at what level someone is at?
Yeah, so Savannah, our parking ambassador, she has a log every day of checks in the time, the parking lot, the space number, the license plate. And so every day, we, at the end of the day, she would just move who got a citation into a different spreadsheet and then track it by license plate number to see, okay, have I issued a citation to this person before? If so, here's what it gets marked as.
What if, what if there's a year in between? Do they get a clean slate every year and it starts over?
We discussed at the DDA of just having it be a for perpetuity. So essentially, once you're at three, that's where you're at. Other communities have done it where it refreshes, but we discussed having it be a, once you're at that level, that's what you're at.
So she has to search her spreadsheet in years?
Right. Based on how we currently, I mean, we've looked at other parking management software, but that's also a fifteen thousand dollar investment for
Yeah.
track it in a more sophisticated way.
It's something that's.
When she's writing the ticket?
Yeah, so she would just pull it up in her spreadsheet and and see what what license plate, how many citations they've been issued.
And that's the and that's the DDA board's recommendation, from what I understand, that that's they're recommending that we approve that this.
Yeah, any or all three of these options? Based on the the feedback we've received.
Well, I'm just going to talk about overnight on street parking. I'm not for eliminated eliminating it from April first to November first. I'm just not. I I would be, I would be for opening up the parking lots, you know, for people to park at night. I mean, in the summertime, I don't have an issue with that, but on street parking, I personally am in favor of eliminating it during the summer.
I agree with that. I don't, yeah. I didn't really, yeah. It was kind of new to me when this came out and I did, so it's already, it's already prohibited from April. I mean, from November to April for snow plowing, and so what they're recommending is that it be closed the entire year under this. You didn't really say, but I'm assuming it would be the same time that they're prohibited now, two AM to six AM. Is that what it is? Two AM to six AM?
Three. Yeah.
For winter months?
Three.
Three to six?
Yeah.
Because what you said here was that, or what somebody said, was that it'd be just prohibited overnight party district for the entire year so that apartment tenants can't park their car from four PM to eleven AM. Why is that something?
Oh, that's, yeah, so that's just the kind of genesis of this is that we got feedback from some business owners that apartment, people that live in apartments would park when our parking enforcement ends at four and then move it at ten AM the next morning so that some of those spaces on street are, yeah, I apologize, that was said it should have been removed in this document, but that's just the kind of why that suggestion came about is because some business owners are seeing apartment renters in those different seasons when they can park overnight. You know, getting their spot at four or five PM, staying overnight and then moving it once we start enforcing it after that two hour limits.
So it's like
limit is done.
Business owners think that tenants are an issue, so when they get there, customers can't park when their shops open at ten because the street's full of tenants who have utilized those spaces. Is there any way to monitor, and I know we've talked about this, so that the tenants aren't on the street, like when the shops open at ten? Is there a way to get them off the street? Like, maybe they can park there, but maybe they have to be gone by eight o'clock in the morning.
Not any more than you can chronic business owners that park either in front of their store or the one across the street. I mean, you know who it is. Everyone knows who it is.
And there are some landlords.
Tenants are, but I but I've had enough business owner complaints that probably rattle off four of them right off the top of my head. We're going to do all of that. That's my point. We're going to do all of this for a half dozen people. And I just, I just don't even see the the expense or the necessity. We're going to change out signs, we're going to get new ticket books. And then we're going to come around and what I want, what I want is the DDA's best case scenario for getting for getting meters downtown, if they approve it in the first place. So we can stop bouncing it back and forth. It's in the CIP. So does that mean that there's still a consensus at the DDA level that that that's what they want eventually? And if it is, let's get some phasing going, let's get some, let's move on that rather than this. So I'm going to say, I'm I'm going to say no to all of this, for at least for the time being. Because I think there's a better plan ahead. But that's, I don't know where you guys are going to go. Somebody can propose it if you'd like, but.
Well, and I'm just, when you look at the numbers, you know, what you're taking in fines, what she's Savannah's doing downtown. She works thirty five hours a week, and what did you say you pay her?
Twenty four thousand a year.
There's a couple of kiosks right there, and then you wouldn't need her. And I hate, I'm not meaning to put Savannah out of a job, but it just, and I don't disagree. A long, long time, we've been putting Band-Aids, Band-Aids, Band-Aids on this. I don't want to pick up to two to three thousand dollars for new ticket books. Personally, I don't want to pay that, and I don't want to pay three to five hundred dollars for new signage to go with the new restructure. I I don't. And I'm not sure what the answer is. I'm not sure what the answer is. But if if a couple, getting a couple of kiosks down there and starting that process helps us, you know, maybe that's the direction we need to go.
But you're still going to need to have someone looking at the cars where they're parked there to see if you're over that.
Then you go back to that, too. Go back to that. So you're paying, you're taking in less than five thousand dollars. And you're paying somebody twenty four thousand dollars to monitor a half a dozen to a dozen cars of people who are irritating everyone downtown. It's kind of like, you know, knocking your head against the wall.
It made more sense when you said it than when I said. It made more sense when you said it than when I said it.
Then with, and if I can add in too, I mean, with, with pay for parking stations, there's no human error for enforcement. Someone logs in, they're there for two hours. We have our ambassador come issue a citation and the money from those fees can pay for more enforcement. I mean, that's just how right now with one person monitoring that many spaces, there's a little bit of room for human, human error for, you know, we can't have a whole fleet of ambassadors at this point in time, catching every single car at every single moment. And I think that's some of the frustration that we hear too.
Yeah. And you know, is there enough support to move forward at all on this recommendations or suggestions?
The overnight lots. I don't see a problem with that. It doesn't hurt.
Would that, would that get the tenants off the street if you opened up the lots?
I live on the street and I'm a tenant and it would get me off the lot.
What'd he say?
Thanks for that perspective, Jesse.
All I'm saying is, um, you know, I usually, uh, so I'm back and forth. I'm only in town so many days a week. Um, I can tell you, I park my car in front of my apartment because I leave at around 4:30, 4:45 in the morning. I'm not bothering anybody. I, I run down, I grab my car, you know, jump to my car, I'm on my way. It's just nice to have it right there rather than walking two blocks away, especially it's weather gets cold at. I will say too, some of the tickets I have gotten, because I've gotten some, have been while all my cars in an empty parking lot in the middle of the day. And I may go over my two hours, but it's, it's a Monday, it's three o'clock and, and I, I do think it's just in a good faith thing if you offer the opportunity to say, hey, let's keep these street ones open. It, it might help and, and maybe it doesn't, but it doesn't hurt to say, we're going to allow people parking lots. I mean, I, I'm not even sure why that, that isn't allowed right now. Is there a reason that maybe we're not where it was?
And I can tell you the reason it's not allowed now, why we put limits on the parking lots is because people who work downtown might work a four, five, six, seven, eight hour shift and they take up a saddle. And then the business owners complain because before 10 o'clock, the lots are full of people who work downtown and there's no place for customers. So it's trying to find a balance we've never done.
And we're not talking about limits. We're talking about overnight. We're not talking about the two hour limits. We're just saying.
Yeah, overnight.
Yeah.
Overnight's only in the winter, right? And that's because plowing.
Currently, right now, you can't park overnight in a parking lot except for the one on the river by the Holiday Inn Express.
Yeah, you can't be on the street overnight right now either. So this would just open up the lots in the summer for overnight parking. And if you aren't parking on the street, you know, and you also have a lot of people who come downtown and they want to go for dinner. They might want to have a couple of drinks, you know, ahead of time. They may park in front of that restaurant and that's, that's where the car stays till 10, 11 o'clock the next morning. Maybe if we just leave the lots, people knowing that that's not true. At least maybe offer the opportunity to open up some of these lots and see what happens, but I don't see a, I don't see a loss in, in moving forward on that one. There's really no downside to overnight parking at least.
I don't disagree.
I didn't see it.
I didn't see it.
I'm saying, I'm looking at the highlights, okay, DDA, I'm looking at the three options we have there and I'm not saying.
Three things that they asked for was exhilarating.
Under overnight on-street parking.
Overnight parking in parking lots throughout the DDA from April 1st to November 1st.
Oh.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. So if overnight on-street parking was prohibited year round on the streets, then as the counter to that, we would say, well, now you can park in the parking lots overnight. When those snow restrictions aren't, aren't in effect.
But again, what is the reason during the summer not to allow overnight parking lots right? If you can park on the street overnight, why not? I think.
I'm not sure to be honest. That's just been, to my knowledge, the way.
Yeah, I don't know. It's.
And I'm not sure why.
But I don't know.
Like, there is a reason. Who was running here to?
I really think a lot of the debate over parking is on the street level. Lots are somewhat mentioned, but really it seems like.
And the overnight concern is.
From like three. Right in front of people's houses. Yeah.
Parking access. All of that, 80 hours and be done with, but when it hit like three o'clock to six or whatever it is, you can't.
Yeah, cause, cause right now in the wintertime, correct me if I'm wrong, but I can park in the lot by, that the Holiday Inn Express shares with us, so to speak. The river, riverfront parking lot. But that's the only one. It's because of plowing. In the summertime, what you're telling me is that you can't, you can't park in a parking lot. I'm sorry. I just had no idea.
Yeah.
I, I walk everywhere. I've worked a lot. But I didn't, yeah, realize that. So I would, and that's a recommendation already from the DDA, because I don't want to do anything tonight.
Of the recommendations.
If we were going to.
I think you would have on-street parking, they said, and open up a parking lot.
Oh, gotcha. Right. Okay. Well, we're not going to take away over it. Unless somebody is, I didn't see anything. Okay. So, so their specific request, and there are three of them. Two of them? Three of them? We're going to go, there's no support for that, right? Am I?
Well, there is support for the last one.
Yeah.
Last city DDA explored long-term parking strategy.
There's support for that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can't say there's no support.
Okay. So, so, but, but maybe if we're not going to, if we're not supportive of the prohibiting on-street parking in the summer, do we want to open up overnight parking in all the parking lots in the summer? By summer, I mean April to November.
Yeah.
Should we pass that back through? Are we jumping on something? Because we keep asking, why did we do that? And nobody at the table can answer why we did that. There's probably a pretty good reason and we're going to come back next month and somebody's going to be like, yeah, we did that because I.
Maybe that was part of when we started our permit system. That was also before I started to try to get apartment tenants to just rent those specific spaces, but maybe that's just been something that's been the city ordinance for a long time.
Maybe we send it all back to them with, with our discussion and let them.
Like we can look into that one.
I don't want to make any harsh decisions tonight, that's for sure.
I would.
Cause if somebody like, well, Jesse, for instance, or anybody that, that has an apartment downtown and we rent them specific spots, so they'll park there and not in the, the visitor's parking, so to speak. If they can park there overnight, why would they even bother ever renting a lot? Yeah.
And that's usually when we get the majority of people is those winter months. So just park on the street during the summer months.
Yeah. Oh, gotcha. Yep. So, okay.
And maybe. Park anywhere in that lot or are there specific spots in each lot for tenants?
In the spaces that we rent, there are specific sign mark spaces. Yeah. But then in the Carter Street lot, they can park anywhere overnight, all day, year round.
Year round. And maybe what we need to do, since Carter Street lot kind of services this part, maybe we need to open up another lot that services this end. Like the third street, let's say.
You mean overnight?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm not opposed to opening them. I just want to make sure somebody.
And I can, I mean, if that's the, the feeling from council, I can put more, just make sure why that was the case and then bring that back as a specific recommendation or something for a discussion.
Check with DPW too and see if we were going to open another lot away from Carter Street down here more, which one would they prefer?
For year round, including when snow restrictions are.
Yeah. Okay.
Why not take a bit from, uh, parking wars and just have tags for the renters? And those parking are allowed in specifics.
We, we do that. We've done.
We have tags for those?
Well, we've had year-hangers. We've, we've done.
It went less, because I've never been there.
I thought if you, I thought you meant if you were parking in a permitted.
Those permitted, uh, parking lots, if you have the tag thing like this, then you can be there. Otherwise you get ticketed, you get towed, whatever you want to get towed, whatever it is.
I just don't think it's drastic enough for us to even bother doing that.
I'm, I was just looking at the factor that it would be if you're talking about a paid parking, that, that would be part of the rental paid in each month and whoever is renting the apartments, it's like this would be responsible for making sure that they had them.
And that was a discussion when we first started getting tenants.
I don't rather, uh, uh, understand how else you could control it.
You can't control it that way either because we tried. You just can't. Cause either the, either the landlord doesn't want to buy the permits and then they send the tenant to you, but the tenant doesn't want to buy the permit either. So nobody wants to buy the.
Get ticketed.
And there's some people that have permits that still park on the street and get ticketed. So.
That's not in the permitted parking area.
Yeah.
Right. But they just prefer to park on the street where it's, you're in, you know, they pay for a permit. So.
If, if you could just come back to us on, they want to open up parking lots. Think you, um, you're rounding one of the lots or, or summertime. Um, then if you could just bring that back with a little bit of research on why that's like that. Uh, and then what I want is the DDAs and the, or, and/or the DDAs parking committees absolute best case scenario for implementing downtown parking heaters.
Okay.
That's what I'd like to see.
And, and again, I just, the one, the one note, if we could is, because I've seen some cities down in Lansing, for example, you can't use cash. Or even a card. And I'm just saying, we have a population, I promise you, is not going to use smartphones to, to make that payment. So we just need.
Right.
On just that.
Okay. Thank you all. I do appreciate the consideration and the, the discussion. That's okay.
It's grueling. I just don't want to do it again in 2050. Let's see. That's it. I think we're, I will adjourn.
Second.
I have some silly questions. It seems so.